Members, this is a session on housing. Let me welcome Secretary for Housing, Ms. Winnie Ho and her team to our meeting. Members, if you want to ask questions, please press Request to Speak button now. And without further ado, I will first invite the secretary to deliver opening remarks, and then I will open the floor for members. Thank you, Chair. First of all, I'd like to express my sincere gratitude to all members for your staunch support for the work of the Housing Bureau and your valuable suggestions, which were good references to help us formulate policies in line with actual circumstances and implement these policies in a more pragmatic manner. The Housing Bureau and the Housing Department have always been striving to facilitate citizens to live in a peaceful and contented life and enhance their sense of well-being and sense of gain. Housing matters top the agenda of the term government. The Bureau has demonstrated this demonstration in courage to practically resolve the housing issues in Hong Kong by continuously introducing a myriad of measures to enhance quality, speed, efficiency, and quality, complemented with appropriate resources and financial arrangements with breakthrough constraints to improve people's livelihood and enhance their well-being. The current government has been dedicated to substantially increasing public housing supply since it took office. Coupled with around thirty thousand light public housing units, the total public housing supply in the next five years will reach one hundred ninety thousand units, which is about eighty percent higher than that of the first five-year period since the government took office. With the above, eligible citizens can be housed in public rental housing more quickly. The various light public housing-related works have been progressing smoothly. Design and construction of all thirteen projects have gradually commenced. The project at Park Yau Road in Yuen Long in particular has commenced intake since the twenty-eighth of March. With our utmost effort in cost control, a total saving of about three thousand seven hundred million dollars, around fifteen percent was achieved in the total construction cost of LPH projects as compared with our funding application approved by the Finance Committee. Our goal is to complete the construction of about thirty thousand LPH units by twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight, so that residents can live in a better living environment whilst waiting for PRH. Along with transitional housing and the various traditional PRH projects to be completed in the coming few years, the government will have the fundamentals to take forward comprehensively measures to effectively and accurately address the problem of subdivided units in Hong Kong. The Task Force on Tackling the Issue of Subdivided Units, led by the Deputy Financial Secretary, proposed an orderly solution to the issue of SDUs of consulting stakeholders. The government is now actively formulating the regulatory regime on basic housing units, BHUs, with the name of introducing the bill into the council in the second half of twenty twenty-five. We'll proactively facilitate logical scrutiny to strive for completion of the work within twenty twenty-five. We expect the registration for pre-existing SDUs to commence in the end of twenty twenty-five or early twenty twenty-six, the earliest, with applications for recognition as BHUs to be accepted concurrently. In parallel, the dedicated team under the Rating and Valuation Department will continue to execute relevant duties related to tenancy control on SDUs under the landlord and tenant consolidation ordinance and with step-up publicity. In addition to assisting people in the community with pressing housing needs, the government has also been striving to enhance the housing ladder in response to home ownership aspirations. With the increase in overall public housing supply, the Housing Authority is reviewing the public housing projects to be completed in the middle or near the end of the next decade with an aim to gradually adjust the ratio between PRH and subsidized sale flats from the current seven to three to six to four. Starting from the next green form, GSX and homeownership scheme, HUS sale exercises, HA will allocate an extra ballot number to applicants who failed to purchase a subsidized sale flat in the next two consecutive sale exercises, so as to increase the chance of applicants who have made repeated attempts to purchase subsidized sale flats. Moreover, starting from the next HUS sale exercise, the ratio between green form and white form in respect of HUS flats will be revised from four to six to five to five to encourage more tenants to buy HUS flats. In order to address young people's aspiration of homeownership and encourage them to move up the ladder, under the White Form Secondary Market Scheme, WSM, twenty twenty-four, launched on the sixth of March, quota has been increased by one thousand five hundred to six thousand, with all the additional quotas allocated to young family applicants and one-person applicants below the age of forty. Furthermore, an extra ballot number will be allocated to young family applicants and singleton applicants aged below forty with white form status for the purchase of HUS flats, starting from the next sale exercise. Under WSM twenty twenty-four, those who participate in the debut youth scheme account for eighty percent of the total applications, reflecting how popular it is. As for private housing supply, according to the latest projections, the supply of first-time private residential properties will remain at a high level of about one hundred and seven thousand units in the next three or four years. To ease the burden on buyers of residential and non-residential properties at lower values, the Financial Secretary announced in the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget that the maximum value of properties chargeable to a stamp duty of one hundred dollars will be raised from three million to four million dollars. We believe that the above measure, which means that the stamp duty of one hundred dollars policy will be applicable to value of properties ranging not from four million dollars or above but three million dollars or above. The government will continue to closely keep in view the development in property market and keep the supply at good pace. The above measures fully demonstrate the pragmatic and people-oriented approach of the current term government, as well as our sustained effort in refining housing policies. My colleague and I will continue to pay heed to members' suggestions, and we're pleased to answer their questions. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Secretary. Nineteen members are waiting to speak. I'm going to read out their names. At least the names of the first fifteen members, and for those lining at the back, please pay attention. Chau Man Kung, Chan Ho Fong, Andrew Lam, Te Kiu Chi Yun, Kenneth Lau, Kenneth Lang, Lee Chan Keng, Tan Kapiu, Lo Man Kwong, Doreen Kong, Vincent Chang, Lo Wei Kong, Wendy Hong, Tony Che, Lu Chong Hong. Lu Chong Hong is the fifteenth member to speak. I'm sure that there'll be time for the first fifteen members to speak, and starting from the sixteenth, Stanley Ng, Starry Lee, So Ching Wing, and Kwok Wa Kung. These are members who follow Michael Lu in the queue. So if we have good timekeeping, you should be able to speak as well. So do observe the time limit. Four minutes, questions and answers. Professor Chau Man Kung. I'd like to ask a question on oh oh nine, a question by Mr. Vincent Chang on LPH and also starter home project for Hong Kong residents. That's a question with serial number oh four oh. I thank the administration for their efforts. They are working on the LPH projects at full steam. In this financial year, I understand that four projects will be completed. In your press release, you mentioned that the relevant operation and service agreements have been approved for two of the projects and for the other two in Tin Mun and Kai Tech. The agreements will be awarded soon. I understand that one hundred and thirty million dollars have been reserved for operating expenses. For the agreements not yet approved, my question is whether the one hundred and thirty million dollars will be sufficient in supporting the operation of all the projects? The other question is about starter home project for Hong Kong residents, about e-residence, Tower Two. Tower One sold out with four hundred and fifty units in total in just one week, and for Tower Three, however, it's been quite some time since the start of the sale, and thirty percent of the flats have not been sold. Now, at the Development Panel Meeting, we discussed whether the criteria should be relaxed and that the potential buyers should not be limited to first-time buyers. Is there any update? Because we're concerned about cash flow. Two questions, Secretary. Let me take the first question on the starter homes for Hong Kong residents projects, as well as the operation of the LPH. Ms. Wong, the Deputy Secretary can take this question. Indeed, for the starter homes for Hong Kong resident projects, e-residence, in the latest batch of sale, several hundred units remained unsold, and we are working closely with the URA as to any adjustment to the sales strategies. This is affected by market sentiment after all, especially for starter homes, they come with a discount. So we need to be very careful about the sales tactics as well as the timing. We're happy to explore possible adjustments. Now, as for the LPH operation, I'll give the floor to Ms. Wong. Thank you, Chair. One hundred and thirty million dollars have been reserved for the operation of the LPH projects in this financial year, having taken into account the intake exercises that will take place this year, including Yaupak Road and also the Tin Mun Area Three A projects, Siren Road in Kai Tech, as well as the other LPH project involving a school. We've taken these into account. Any supplement from Professor Chau Man Kung? Next, Mr. Chan Ho Fong. Thank you. Two questions from me, oh oh two and oh oh three. According to the administration's reply to my question in oh oh two, the overall occupancy rate in twenty twenty-four was close to ninety-four percent under the funding scheme to support transitional housing projects by NGOs. However, if we take a look, closer look at the table, for some of these projects, the occupancy rates were less than fifty percent. So my question is, what can be done to boost the occupancy rate to at least seventy to eighty percent? Because for category A, category B tenants in particular, the occupancy rate was as high as eighty, seventy, eighty percent. Now, my next question is about oh oh three. For the anti-abuse measures, since they have been put in place, more cases have been received by the Appeal Panel Housing. According to your reply, one hundred and fifty-four cases, I mean, one hundred and fifty-four notices to quit were canceled, and seventy-one of them involved cases, I mean, were cases involving well-off tenants' policies. This number is a record high in recent years. So my question is whether the anti-abuse measure is being indiscriminate? And seventy-one of these cases have had the notices to quit canceled. They were well-off tenants. So is it an indicator that perhaps you're going too far with the anti-abuse measure? Right, two questions, transitional housing and well-off tenant policies. Let's take a look at the turnover rate. Close to sixty percent of the overall usage rate or turnover rate was one hundred percent, and that means some of these tenants eventually moved out, they moved up to public housing, and then these units are vacated. So that means the overall usage of transitional housing remains positive. Now, I thank the member for noticing the details. For some of these projects, they are situated in the new territories, and some of them were only commissioned in the second half of last year. So time is needed for the intake and for publicity. So are there the T H stage, for example, for the United Court and the Kong Hawa Village? In the past, at the start, we all questioned the occupancy rate, but if we take a look at the current occupancy rates now, the former has a occupancy rate of one hundred and thirty-two percent and the other one hundred and eighteen percent. So that means the overall usage rate is about a hundred percent, I mean, it's above one hundred percent. As for the recently completed TH projects in the new territories, in order to boost the occupancy rate, we have implemented a number of measures. The operator, for example, may run open day or tours. They invite tenants living currently in village houses or squatter huts nearby to take a look at the transitional housing units. They can take a look at the living environment, the supporting facilities, the very good transport network, and this will instill confidence in the potential tenants. We'll also share these successful cases with other operators. Now, for the anti-public housing abuse measures, similar to previous years, around fifteen percent of these notices would eventually be canceled. These tenants may lodge an appeal, and the panel members would scrutinize the case and eventually decide to cancel the notices to quit. So in fact, this percentage is similar to that in previous years. We also have other policies. For example, recently, we demand well-off tenants to declare the assets, and we received two hundred and ten thousand such cases.
Mr. Andrew Lam, two questions, oh two eight and oh two nine. I start with oh two nine. It's about gathering figures. We have been doing much in turnover and combating tenancy abuse. And all those efforts have a bearing on rent. There are people living in poor conditions, and there's an impact on those people, too. I can see the government has been gathering data. But let's look at the tenancy market and people in poor conditions, those inadequately housed. We need research, we need surveys on such cases. We're looking at a bill for basic housing units, and that means there will be rapid changes in the market, for better or for worse. So I say, can the government find someone to keep track of changes in the rental market, even if you don't take the approach of the CNSD? Now, I turn to oh two eight. It's about CAT Cash Allowance Trial Scheme. This scheme will not be renewed. Application numbers have been rising. The amount involved has also been growing. That means many people need such an allowance. That's only a trial scheme, after all. The secretary has said on different occasions that there are other sources of flats and there are other forms of support to help people. So can I just clarify this point? If we stop this scheme, and there are people who need this allowance, what do we do to help those people in terms of their housing needs? There are people living in poor conditions, and then the more decent flats come with higher and higher rents, what do we do about these people with housing needs? So two questions, one about following or keeping track of the rental market, and also what we do after we cancel the scheme, the Cash Allowance Trial Scheme. Secretary. Now, for subdivided units, we have quarterly reports monitoring changes in rent levels. Take the last year. We have data on Hong Kong Island, Kaohsiung, and the new territories. There was no rise in rent. For some districts, the rent actually fell. We know overall rents have risen by four or five percent, but for SDUs, the rent has not risen, and it has fallen in some district. We have transitional housing and light public housing now. So now we have more supply of flats. Now, the Cash Allowance Trial Scheme, that scheme will indeed end in June this year. Nineteen thousand transitional housing flats are already on stream, and for light public housing, we have two thousand one hundred light public housing flats already available in Yuen Long, and in late May, those flats will be fully occupied. And then we will have more LPH flats this year, with further such flats to come next year. Next year, it would be two twenty thousand extra LPH flats, and that will be very close to our target of thirty thousand flats. So there are already flats with cheaper rents, and those flats can take the place of this trial scheme. Indeed, one hundred and ten thousand people have applied for this scheme, but fifty-five thousand such applicants have already received offers of public rental estate flats. So the cash allowance will stop for those fifty-five thousand people. Next, Dr. Te Kiu Chi Yun. In her opening remarks, the secretary told us about their work. I can see the secretary and her team has done much work on housing. Now, HB oh oh three, it's about combating tenancy abuse and the appeal panel. Frontline social workers have been approached by seniors and persons with disabilities and their families. So for these appeal cases, how many cases involve seniors or family members of PWDs? If you don't have the figures at hand, please give me a written answer afterwards. The government has emphasized empathy in its approach to combating tenancy abuse, especially when seniors and PWDs are involved. So specifically, what does this empathetic approach mean? Indeed, we should be taking back flats when there are irregularities or abuse, but such things happen, and there are social or other medical factors at play. How do we strike a balance among different factors? Now, you have three people sitting on the appeal panel, mostly people from the legal sector. Can we have more social workers or healthcare workers on the panel so that we have different voices and have a more balanced discussion at the panel? Now, when you have a senior who breaks the rules and then you take back the flat, but then there are compassionate grounds, so you make a special arrangement. If you don't get the transition right, the senior will have to move out first before getting rehoused in another flat on compassionate grounds. Can you do better on that? So the questions are about combating tenancy abuse, compassionate arrangements, et cetera. Secretary. Now, the makeup of the appeal panel. Decisions are made based on legal provisions and evidence, so we mostly have people from the legal sector on the panel. But Dr. Te made a good point, we will explore getting different professionals to sit on the appeal panel. On support for seniors and PWDs, my colleague, the Permanent Secretary, can take the question. Now, on the makeup of the appeal panel, we have one chairperson and one hundred and twenty-nine members on the panel. Legal professionals make up sixty percent of the panel. As for the rest, they are from a variety of backgrounds. There are people from business, education, social welfare, or district services. So we do have a balanced makeup for the panel. Now, I turn to the other point. The point about cases involving compassionate grounds. The appeal panel may sustain the decision, meaning ordering the tenant to move out, and when the tenant has special needs, they can approach the social welfare department, and then the social worker can make arrangements based on compassionate grounds, and the social worker can talk to the Housing Authority, and those colleagues will work closely together. Dr. Te. My point is, I need the figures of cases involving seniors and those involving PWDs in the appeal cases. So, Permanent Secretary, can you see if you can give us the breakdown? We will look into that. Next, Mr. Kenneth Lau. HB oh three oh. My own question. It's about the LPH units at Seoul Lam Lot on Pi, four thousand two hundred units, house family units for, how families are for Q three next year, the project will be completed, and then the government said it's working with the Transport Department on the transport links to Moon Town Center and the Moon Public Transport Interchange. The transport fares are rather high, and then Seoul Lam Lot on Pi is a rather remote region, meaning no wet market, no mall, no police station in the area. So how can we attract people to live there? Would the government consider rent concessions? Would there be an extension to the rent concession scheme for LPH flats? Now, there will be fifty thousand units from transitional housing and LPH, and there are no plans to increase the supply of LPH flats. We have two hundred thousand people living in subdivided units. On the waiting list, there are more than one hundred and ten thousand, effort waiting time more than five years for public rental estate flats. So are there further plans for light public housing units? Secretary. I thank Mr. Lau for his attention to the more remote parts and the transport linkage. Now, we can look at the experience with Yaupak Road in Yuen Long. When those flats started intake, we had the minibus routes and bus routes in place. The bus and minibus operators were on site. They arranged services at fifteen-minute intervals. In Yuen Long, there were stores. They work like mini supermarkets, offering groceries at affordable prices. So I hope those stores can look after the needs of local residents. The same strategy can be replicated in Seoul Lam, so there will be stores, laundry stores, and also public bus services. Next to the LPH in Seoul Lam, there has been land formation for bus routes. We hope that people will find the LPH convenient with the bus route. Now, with transitional housing and LPH, we will have fifty thousand flats. Indeed, there are one hundred and ten thousand households living in SDUs, but our research shows that some SDUs offer better conditions than others. Now, only thirty thousand SDUs fall short of the required standards when you look at what's required for basic housing units, and BHUs will come on stream. So we will stick to the current supply of twenty thousand transitional housing flats and thirty thousand LPH flats. Next, Mr. Kenneth Lau. There were different forms of help for young people, such as the WSM scheme for young people and also the Youth Entrepreneurship Scheme for young people. I thank the Housing Bureau for all these efforts. Now, my questions. Oh four oh. Starter Homes. Starter Homes are for those who do not qualify for HUS flats but cannot afford private flats. But now, the price differential between HUS flats and private flats have narrowed. So have we looked at the income levels of those who applied for Starter Homes to see if they now qualify now? Now, on Anderson Road and Quarry Side, there's a housing project. Is that under the Starter Home project? Now, oh four one is about the appeal panel. Twenty twenty-four, you receive the appeal, and then you reach a verdict. It takes two point three months on average to reach a verdict. You now have one hundred and thirty people on the appeal panel, up thirty percent. As we get tougher in combating abuse, there may be more cases when households split at PRH flats. Can we have separate teams on the appeal panel? Can we have separate teams on the appeal panel? One for straightforward cases and the other for more special complicated cases? Now, an appeal takes two-point-three months to process. Of course, you cannot sort out the case in one day. Can we set a target where you process a case faster?
Secretary, following up on the Starter Homes project and the time taken for appeal panel to vet cases. Apart from the six hundred or close to seven hundred units sold for the E-residence project, there are still around five thousand units coming on stream for sale. So we'll continue to make an effort, and we'll meanwhile have regard to the market situation and overall circumstances. And we will discuss with the projects proponents. Now, for tenancy abuse, indeed, in light of the increased workload, the number of members on the panel increased from one hundred to one hundred and twenty at first and then to one hundred and thirty recently. And I'm very grateful to these members because they often have to work overtime, wait into the night and on Saturdays as well. And that's why they've been able to shorten the time of determining an appeal from four months to two-point-three months. Now, I thank the member for the very good question. Is it possible to have two different queues of cases so that some members could deal with these more straightforward cases or cases that they are familiar with so as to further shorten the processing time? I will take up, take this idea up with the secretariat. Next, Ms. Ma Koo-Lee. Two questions asked by Mr. Chan Ho-Fung. I'd like to pick up on those, O2 and O4. The secretary already asked, already answered the question on occupancy rate and the turnover rates of the units. And I thank the government for increasing supply substantially so that the members of the public are given more choices. Secretary, be it THLPH or the regulatory regime on basic housing units, I think they all come under one basket. It's an overall strategy that we need to consider. So is it possible in the future to put in place rehousing arrangements for those affected under the regulatory regime on BHUs? That means for those affected, they can first of all be rehoused in, say, transitional housing, and that will also help shorten the waiting time for PRH so as to optimize views of public resources. The next question is about the CATS. According to your reply in O4, there is no intention to extend the scheme. We support that because we have thirty thousand LPH units coming on stream and twenty thousand TH units. So for the outstanding balance of about two, eight billion dollars, how are you going to use it? But thank you, Ms. Lee, for the questions. That's a very good point. Indeed, for the light public housing, public rental housing, transitional housing, together with the regulatory regime on basic housing units, they come under one umbrella. So the transitional housing and light public housing come hand in hand. Before that, we had the category A tenant applicants and category B tenants. Cat A tenant refers to those who've been on the PRH queue for more than three years. And with LPH projects coming on stream, we have increased the quotas for Cat B tenants. And in fact, in the new territories, the ratio could be as large as eighty percent that is for Cat B tenants. So you see the different focuses for different projects. For TH projects, we focus on Cat B tenants, and we also have light public housing projects that come with their own timetables. For the basic housing units, we also allow for a grace period of three years for registration and recognition. As for the CATS, in fact, there are more choices available with affordable rent, say, for example, three thousand dollars for transitional housing. And for smaller units in Yunnan Long, in light public housing projects, the rent could be as low as eight hundred and eighty dollars. And as such, there is, there should be a minimal demand for the CATS. You talked about the estimates of eight billion dollars for the cash allowance trial scheme, and this comes from the public coffers. This is just the provision applied for the remain, the balance remain in the central coffers. Mr. Bill Tang, two questions. I'd like to pick up on the questions put by Mr. Kwatwei Kang, O59 and O24. The first question relates to the submission of AR2 forms. At the moment, the number stands at fifty-two thousand seven hundred. Please keep up with the good work because I thank the government for taking up the FTU's suggestions upon passage of the bill relating to basic housing units. The line will be drawn, and that for those who would like to operate the basic housing units after the line's been drawn, they would need to follow the new registration regime. About fifty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty-six reach subdivided units, how many of these landlords will be withdrawing from the market? Have you conducted any assessment upon passage of the bill within this year? For example, how many of these fifty-two thousand SDUs will withdraw from the market? The next question relates to O24. Five-point-five billion dollars have been spent benefiting one hundred and ten thousand households under the cash allowance trial scheme. That means our grassroots have indeed benefited from the scheme. It is rather unfortunate that this scheme will end in June this year. My question is, have you conducted any assessment as to how many of the one hundred and ten thousand beneficiaries indeed reside in subdivided units? We need accurate and real data for the government to formulate policies. Right, two questions about the SDU market as well as the data collection for cash allowance trial scheme. Secretary. Thank you. Indeed, we received fifty-two thousand AR2 forms. We see an annual increase. For example, the second year, in the second year, there was an increase of thirty-six percent comparing to the first year, and then in the third year, an increase of fifty-six percent. So that goes along with our prosecution efforts. Together with the regulatory regime of BHUs, we expect to receive even more AR2 forms. As for how many subdivided units will be withdrawing from the market, that's really a commercial decision for owners. On the other hand, we also have interested, I mean, owners interested in operating basic housing units in the future. So we do expect some more such units to emerge. And for SDUs that are really substandard, perhaps because of the amount of efforts to convert these units to meet standards, they may withdraw the market. For some others, they may wish to be recognized as basic housing units in the future. So we'll keep in view the future development. As for the one hundred and ten thousand households benefiting from the cash allowance trial scheme, how much data can we get for, to help us formulate policies? Well, I think that's a very good suggestion. I will take it up with my colleagues and see whether we have useful data for our reference. Of course, if you have data available, you can take follow-up action. At least you can find out where these households will be moving to after the end of the CTS. Next, Mr. Lam Man Kwan. I'd like to follow up on O35, O36, the two questions asked by me about the CTS. The secretary just now already responded to other members' questions, and she explained the justifications why the CTS will not be extended beyond June this year. Meanwhile, I'd like to explain this to the secretary. I understand that in terms of the number of intakes under LPH or TH, the government may find them sufficient in meeting the demands of PRH applicants, and that accounts for the end of the CTS. But in reality, members of the public have aspirations for LPH, and this is their top choice. So can we exclude others and simply use the LPH figures to consider the CTS operation period? For example, we have, by the end of the year, one-third of the units were ready for intake. So can we extend the scheme a bit in light of this situation so as to allow more grassroots to make applications? Is it possible to just set aside one-tenth of the two billion dollars in the balance to be plowed back to the public coffers, and that you can allow for the scheme to run on for a little bit longer so that for households with special circumstances, such as households with children, can still benefit from the scheme so that meanwhile they can apply for public rental housing? For O36, a rather straightforward question, as mentioned by the secretary in her opening remarks. In this, in the second, next, second five-year period of the ten-year housing supply target, the ratio between PRH and SSFs could be further adjusted. Now, for the first five-year period, however, I understand that the majority of supply will come under PRH and GSH. Is it possible to encourage more PRH tenants to buy flats on the GSH so as to improve turnover? Right, two questions about the end of the CTS and the follow-up work as well as adjusting the ratio between PRH and SSF. Thank you, Chair. We need to consider the matter comprehensively. We do have limited resources. And since we are already investing resources in, say, transitional housing for rent and also light public housing, under which some nine thousand units will come on stream next year. So very soon, we'll have a supply of twenty thousand units in total. Having considered all the circumstances, we've decided to call an end to the CTS in June this year. As I mentioned, for the fifty-five thousand units that will be available, they, I mean, for the fifty-five thousand beneficiaries who have had PRH offers, they benefited. So I think it's opportune time to call an end to the scheme. As for the two billion dollars in the balance, I mean, for the unused provisions, they remain in the government's reserve. We apply for funding for specific purposes. Is it possible to use any outstanding balance for other purposes? The answer is no. However, we do keep in view the needs of residents living in transitional housing and light public housing. There may be extra expenses in moving places. So we have other funds available, such as a CCF. For a single-turn household, a five-thousand-dollar subsidy would be provided. And for a four-person household, the subsidy could be as high as nine thousand dollars to help them move flats and buy furniture. As for adjusting the ratio between PRH and SSF, we understand the need to help people move up the housing ladder. For GSH applicants, we want to help them as well, and we have adjusted the ratio. In the past, it was four to six, now it's five to five, meaning green farmers versus white farmers to increase the chances.
Mr. Ring Kong. HB008. It's about PRH flats, TH flats, and LPH flats to be completed in the next ten years. Those are large numbers. We will see three hundred thousand PRH flats, twenty thousand TH flats, and thirty thousand LPH flats. All together, three hundred and fifty thousand flats. There are only seven million people in Hong Kong. So many flats to be completed. I'm not calling for fewer flats to be built, but I have a worry. The secretary has told us about the cheap rent at these flats. My concern is whether we have the means to keep such public flats running. It's a large number of flats all to be rented out. Do we have the money to run, manage, and maintain these flats? We put in so much, we put so much money into building LPH flats. I doubt we will tear down everything in five or seven years' plan. My question is, do we have an overall plan, so-called master plan? Do we have the financial model? Do we have the means to keep all these going? My next question has to do with Starter Homes. Five thousand Starter Homes will be built. I agree with Mr. Kenneth Lau's point about the need for Starter Homes. Below five million dollars, you can buy, you have many options. Even in Wan Chai, you can get a flat for three million dollars for flats foreclosed by a bank. So can we think outside the box? Can we put resources into areas where the need is greater? Can we do service departments for shorter-term tenancies for people who come here under talent schemes? For seniors with dementia, can we offer special housing for them? Can we make creative use of our finite resources? So the first question, maintenance costs for PRH flats and also Starter Homes. Secretary. Thank you. First, let's talk about PRH flats. We do have an overall plan for this. Three hundred and eight thousand public flats, that's what we talk about all the time. We're talking about not just PRH flats, but also subsidized sale flats. Thirty percent or over time, forty percent of such flats will be subsidized sale flats. Meaning, those SSFs are for meeting young people's aspirations for home ownership. Every year, we announce the figures under the long-term housing strategy. We look at what happens in the next ten years. We'll take into account the latest figures, and also we factor in the latest talent schemes. We assess the impact on the rental market and also the property market in general. And then we make assessments, we make projections with prudence, and make sure the housing supply can meet the community's needs. Take the Housing Authority. Subsidized sale flats bring revenue to the HA. And then for PRH flats, the income stream means the rent. So we adjust the rent when needed every two years. The overall financial robustness of these flats is also top of mind for me. I thank Ms. Kong for bringing up this point. We will keep an eye on the demand and supply for such flats. Now, I turn to Starter Homes. There are a few projects underway. Starter Homes are for people with an income level that is within thirty percent above the limits for HUS flats. Market conditions change, indeed. I thank Ms. Kong for bringing up this point. I will remain in touch with those working on Starter Home projects to make sure that those projects can meet the public's needs. Next, Mr. Vincent Chen. HB059 and O64. I thank the Housing Bureau for the work over the past year, especially for Especially for the work that has paid off done by the RVD. We now have more than fifty thousand forms AR two. Over the past year, there were twenty thousand new forms that came in. Now, we have fifty thousand now, but that also means fifty thousand units have yet to be covered. Now, we will see the registration for basic housing units soon. So how do we get more people to register under this scheme? So can we have targets for tenancy registrations? I can see some KPIs here, key performance indicators, but they have to do with inspections only. So can we have a go on covering an extra forty thousand SDUs for forms AR two? If you can do that, you can cover most SDUs under the tenancy control scheme. I'm looking at the strategy here. So you, you have done inspections and visits. Can we do fewer visits? Now, more than three hundred cases resulted in penalties altogether, six hundred thousand dollars. So on average, two thousand dollars in penalties for each case. So there's little in the way of a deterrent effect. So before we start the registration of BHUs, can we get more SDUs to be registered under our current scheme? Now, CATS will not be renewed. Other members have called on the government to keep that allowance. So can the government give some thought to these points? We want better living conditions for SDU residents. Now, since we will get BHUs, so can we get support through, say, the Community Care Scheme, Community Care Fund? So that we can make life easier for those residents? So I can see many members have asked about ending CATS. And then there was another question about the registration and inspections of SDUs, Secretary? Now, Mr. Siu from the RVD can take the question about registration of SDUs. Now, on CATS, the government has announced that the scheme will not be renewed after June this year. We have the Community Care Fund. We will consider the needs of residents of LPH flats to see if there's a need to secure further resources to help them. Now, on the work of the RVD, they do a variety of work. They don't just inspect units, they spot cases. Sometimes a call comes in, they spot a problem. So they do go on the offensive, they have done much. So Mr. Kevin Siu from the RVD. We note the members' concerns. As the secretary said, we have received fifty-three, fifty-two thousand seven hundred forms AR two. And the number we received each year simply got higher from the year before. Our work focuses on two areas. One, enforcement. Two, publicity and education. On enforcement, we have our investigation teams. We spot cases. We also take a multi-pronged approach in doing so. Now, on inspections, over the past year, there were fewer inspections, previously three thousand. Over the past year, six hundred inspections or so. But inspections are just one way for us to spot cases. We do have key performance indicators on checking for irregularities on the part of the landlords of SDUs. We also got in touch with SDU residents, and we're talking about tens of thousands of such residents. In terms of convictions, six hundred or so so far. Twenty twenty-four to twenty-five, four hundred and thirty cases. More than doubling the level from the year before. I thank my colleagues for the hard work, for the enforcement efforts, and their investigation. We will keep working on the number of forms AR two. We'll step up enforcement, publicity, and education. We will also explore further ways to spot irregularities so that hopefully we can get more and more forms AR two. Dr. Lu Weiqiao. Chairman, I want to follow up on HB. It's a question about BHUs, HB oh four five. I find the progress with BHUs encouraging. Now, the secretary has visited light public housing projects that have been completed. People have to put up with higher rents in SDUs, but they get cheaper rents when they move to LPH flats. And their support for LPH residents. So that's welcome news. Some people criticized the LPH project, but we are seeing the work pay off with LPH units. My question is, will LPH tenants have access to PRH flats by the time they move out of their LPH flats? We don't want them to move back to SDUs again. There are different kinds of tenants. Some have been waiting for PRH flats for longer than the others, but we should be compiling the statistics. LPH units and transitional housing units are transitional in nature. We need data. We want these people to have better housing conditions, meaning in the end, they get access to PRH flats. The government needs a holistic policy on the housing needs of people from all walks of life. Other members have mentioned starter homes. Those homes are for people from a certain class. The last thing we want to see is people lying flat just to qualify for a certain kind of housing. That won't do anyone any good. In contrast, when you have different rungs along the housing ladder, you will see upward mobility and there will be a positive mindset among the population, and that's something we want to see. Secretary? Thank you. I fully agree with Dr. Luo. The work we have done over these few years aims to fix the housing split. We have discussed transitional housing, LPH flats. There appear to be two extra rungs along the housing ladder. But then there are also SSFs. We have the well-loved tenant policy. We are also making changes to the green form, white form split. We have this holistic strategy for people to be able to move up the housing ladder with greater ease. We want people to get a better picture of the aim of our public housing policy. Now, on the results of TH units and LPH flats. We can get in touch with university teams to take a deeper look at the results. Now, we're looking at the WSM project. Someone said they lived in a TH flat for three years and then they can afford a WSM flat. So I hope everyone can see that, given the vast resources we committed to these different housing options, people can now, are now in a better position.
Dr. Wendy Hong. I have a question on fiscal viability in the long term. We have eight hundred and fifty thousand public housing in Hong Kong. That accounts for over thirty percent of the housing stock in Hong Kong. Among similar advanced economies in the world, we rank the top. We have over thirty percent of housing in Hong Kong being public housing in the coming ten years. Uh overall, there will be over one million public housing units. So in terms of long-term financial viability, this may not be a good idea. We need to put a cap on the total number of public housing units in order to increase turnover and help people move up the ladder. So, uh Secretary, will you consider conducting a study as to whether such a cap should be imposed? The secretary just referred to long-term housing strategy. I've also read this document. That means um it's a demand-led approach. We look at the demand and then we decide how many flats should be provided. So it's a demand-led approach, it's based on the society's needs. But in fact, this long-term housing strategy does not have any vision as to exactly the percentage of public housing that should be provided to Hong Kong people in the long term. The second question is about the occupancy rate of transitional housing. I find this quite peculiar. For some of these projects, such as um the project in Hong Kong, uh Joyard is sixty-six percent. And the other project in Chiang Kwan Ho is fifty-five percent, fifty-five percent. Another one in Kai-Tech, twenty-six percent. These are in urban and extended urban areas. While for larger projects, according to your reply, more time may be needed to scr- uh to scrutinize applications. But for the Hong Kong and Chiang Kwan Ho projects, the intake started in the first quarter of last year. Why is it that despite the early intake, the occupancy rates for these projects remained low? And also, for the CATS, uh in the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, eighty-six and eighty-one respectively, time-limited non-directory posts were created. And the uh total expenditure for the departments amounted to uh one thousand five hundred and eighty fifteen to uh fifteen million and forty million dollars respectively. In twenty-twenty-four, despite the thirty-five posts um being scrapped, the expenditure on personal emoluments still amounted to five million dollars. And the total departmental expenditure amounted to thirteen million dollars. Why is it so? Right, three questions about public housing demand, long-term strategy, uh a study, and also the low occupancy rate of transitional housing projects as well as uh expenditure. Now, let me take the first two questions. I won't, I don't agree with the suggestion that the long-term housing strategy is one that lacks vision. We have a ten-year plan. And for this ten-year projection, that is our vision. We look at what our society needs. And of course, there may be changes. In the past, we did not have talent admission schemes. These schemes began to um to uh operate, starting from twenty-twenty-two. And that, and these schemes generate housing demand. We need to keep things flexible whilst maintaining a long-term vision. For public housing, we're not just talking about public rental housing. We also need to look at the subsidized sale flats. Now, in fact, in the past, the ratio is five, two, and three, with um public rental housing taking up a higher proportion. That's because of the land supply problem in the future. Land creation was a major challenge for us. Many grassroots applicants had to wait long for public rental housing. And that's why we introduced a five, two, three ratio back then. In this year's policy address, we have proposed to increase the ratio of subsidized sale flats. We're now moving towards the um ratio of four, three, and three in the next ten years. And depending on society's needs, we may further adjust this ratio. We need to have regard to the overall housing ladder as well as housing demand in general. So uh we will continue to take a flexible approach and we will keep in view uh social changes. As for transitional housing, I do agree with Dr. Wendy Hong's point. Perhaps transitional housing in its name may have some implications uh as to how residents uh make their choices. Say for Lok Wausa, it's actually very close to Maung Shan MTL station. It's just a five-minute walk. Now, in Hong Kong, Kai-Tech, you may have the impression that since these are in urban areas, these projects must be popular and the occupancy rates must be high. And that's in fact not the case in reality. I encourage all interested applicants to check out the details on our website to see what choices are available. You shouldn't just look at the names of these projects. For some particular projects, we do keep in view the operational issues. We continue to discuss with the operators on matters such as publicity. For example, they may wish to run guided tours uh to promote their units to um nearby residents living in inadequate housing. I'll give the floor to the PS to take the other question. Right, please be brief, we're running out of time. Just very briefly, when we conducted, when, uh when we conducted the trial scheme, we had to pay for um salaries as well as other departmental expenses. Now, we have some basic overheads to pay for. So that means the departmental expenditure would be fixed in general. That won't be affected by the number of households benefiting from the CATS. As for personal emolum- emoluments expenses, from twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, there were eighty-six posts. The establishment was reduced to just thirty-five in twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five. Still, most of these um posts are supervisory posts. The posts reduced were front-lined ones. In the, on the first of April, twenty-twenty-five, we further slashed the establishment by twenty posts with a view to eventually winding down the scheme. Well, this question hasn't been asked by other members, and that is why just now I allowed the administration to provide a more detailed answer. But um from now on, we may need to observe the time limit more strictly because we still have many members waiting to ask questions. Mr. Tony, Chair. I'd like to follow up on three replies, zero, zero, six. First of all, as mentioned by the secretary just now, we have different rungs on the housing ladder, each giving place to functions. We have transitional housing and light public housing, for example. So picking up on what the secretary said about occupancy rate just now, I do find um that there is room for improvement. Transitional housing is operated by NGOs. Light public housing is run by the government itself. So of course, there may be different concerns. Secretary, you mentioned that you'll be talking to the operators in order to optimize the um use of transitional housing units and boost occupancy rate. My next question is about reply serial number O three two uh about this Chawan um project. That is PSSF. While land resources are valuable, we should not let any piece of land left idle. Meanwhile, I understand that the government will also need to have regard to the market situation. The government should also review the land lease conditions to avoid another abortion of tender. Because we still have many people with planning housing needs. So the government shouldn't just think about guardrails and oversight. The government should be more pro-market, so as not to waste valuable resources. Uh my next question is about O five eight. My next question is about oh, five, eight. The Rating and Valuation Department has provided figures in relation to the number of inspections and the target for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five is one thousand SDUs. The Secretary also explained the final figure. But my take is that you should inspect as many SDU households as possible. You should make inquiries. You should be more proactive. Because upon inquiry by the department, the owners are required to provide information. I understand that the number has gone up by three hundred compared to the previous year. So I think this is also due to more inquiries being made. And as a result, the department conducted fewer inspections. Right, I think you've answered the first question about LPH and transitional housing. What about focusing on the second question, please? About the PSSF question? Naturally, we need to have regard to the market situation and the acceptance. And if we are to relaunch any bit under the private subsidized sale flat pilot scheme, we will keep in view the market situation. I thank Mr. Chair for his reminder. Next, Mr. Michael.
Thank you, Chairman. A question on oh, two, five about the establishment of the Appeal Panel Housing and the relevant operations. In the past five years, the Appeal Panel Housing dealt with quite a lot of cases with the notices to quit being amended or canceled. In twenty-twenty-four, for example, one thousand one hundred and twelve cases were dealt with, three hundred and eighty-six as well as three hundred, three hundred and thirty-four cases were either amended or withdrawn or canceled. That accounts for thirteen percent. So that means the panel decided in some of these cases that the notices to quit should be canceled and alternative should be put in place for the aggrieved. So under what circumstances will the department issue notices to quit? Because public resources are scarce. Of course, we need to tackle tenancy abuse. But at the same time, the overcorrection may affect residents. And that's often the complaint received by our frontline staff. The second point is, in the past, a lax approach was taken. The government was lax in requiring declarations of assets and income. Now things have changed, but can we still put people first? For example, some tenants may have made omissions in their declarations about their children's income or other transactions. And these omissions could lead to the PRH units being taken back. And in the end, the household tenants were forced out of their units. They turned to interim housing. Some of these are in their eighties and they feel helpless. They need to queue up for PRH again. So a word for the Housing Department, if the names of the children are excluded from the household register, you should remind the elderly tenants to move to a smaller unit. Are there ways to deal with these cases on compassionate grounds?
So the questions are about a more compassionate approach to combating tenancy abuse. Secretary, thank you. The point made by Mr. Lok goes to show how our appeal panel is making a difference. Some cases are sustained, others are amended or canceled. Our frontline officers look at the actual circumstances. Say, a flat has been left idle, underoccupied, unoccupied for a long time. There may be valid reasons for such nonoccupation. So that's where the appeal panel comes in. They look at the circumstances. In some cases, the notice to quit may be amended or canceled. So that's where the appeal panel is making a difference. Now, we do have some enhancements. The Permanent Secretary can tell us more about that.
On enhancement, we have heard concerns that parents are left in the dark when their children buy properties. In such cases, the children omit to declare such transactions or they make false declarations. In such a case, the entire household will be barred from applying for PRH flats for five years. In some cases, the parents are left in the dark. So we have an enhancement measure. Meaning, when such omission or false declaration happens, the person who omits to declare that will be held fully responsible and only that person will be barred from applying for a PRH flat for five years. And when we hold someone legally liable, we will hold that particular person liable. In other cases, you may have only a provisional sell-and-purchase agreement, but that deal falls through instead of going through. In such a case, we allowed the household or the tenant to stay in the flat until that transaction is completed. Or in other cases, say a divorce, or someone just inherited property. In those cases, we don't ask the tenant to move out right away. We will give the tenant time. Thank you. Next, Mr. Sen Im. HB oh, four, nine. Light public housing. The government has put in the work to achieve the savings. I also applaud the current term government for its sense of mission, its sense of responsibility to address the earnest concerns of people. And that's why we have the light public housing units. The measures launched over the years are part of a broader strategy. We have LPH flats, transitional units. We will also see basic housing units. The cash allowance trial scheme is also part of the strategy. Not everyone can access a PRH flat, so other forms of support are available. So my question is, for all these different forms of housing, all these are short-term measures. People have to move out of those flats at some point. We are gradually completing LPH flats. And then TH flats may also no longer be available over time. So how do we manage the supply of these different forms of housing? CATS will be ended soon. And then you will see BHUs on stream. There will be new demand for housing. So how should we manage the housing needs of people in the short term? How do we make good use of LPH flats and TH flats to meet people's pressing needs? Not everyone can be housed in a PRH flat right away, after all. Launching BHUs, or rather, the regulatory regime of BHUs will also generate new demand because some people will have to move out of their SDUs. So can the Secretary tell me more about this short-term strategy? So the questions have to do with CATS and also transitioning to PRH flats and also TH flats, LPH flats. Secretary, thank you. Mr. Im asked a great question. There will be huge changes in the housing market in the next few years. We're moving faster in building PRH flats. There will be a hundred fifty-eight thousand PRH flats. And they cover not just PRH flats, but also SSFs. With more SSFs, there will be faster turnover of PRH flats because people move out. Now, on LPH flats, the site in Yunnan is given to us on loan for five years. As for the other sites for LPH units, those are government sites. So we will keep an eye on the long-term plans for our sites. Say for Choyheng, we have an expansion project for the service reservoir. We can talk to different departments so that we can keep the LPH flats for longer. Now, for TH flats, those flats tend to sit on sites given to us by developers on loan. We can talk to developers. But there are also sites for TH flats that are also government sites. Now, for BHUs, registration will be one year and then after a while, there will be BHUs with recognition. So that means more housing options in the private market. I get the point of Mr. Im. We will keep an eye on the figures and get the support right. Next, Dr. Starry Lee.
I applaud the sense of mission of the Secretary in her work. We have made, taken these bold steps with LPH flats. The Secretary's team has been willing to hear from the community. They have been in touch with the community. Now, I want to ask a question about the well-being housing design. There are seniors in many housing estates. The well-being design makes life easier for seniors and contributes to their sense of well-being. So I hope that more older estates can be covered by the well-being design with an aging population. And there are many seniors living in some of the older estates. So let's bear in mind their needs. Now, on combating tenancy abuse and pursuing the well-off tenancy, well-off tenant policy. So now we are, we be, we will be charging higher rents for well-off tenants. It's understandable as far as resources are concerned and we want to clamp down on abuse. I think we have much reduced tenancy by now. Let's also bear in mind the need to strike a balance. We want legality, principles, and also compassion. So can we take, keep an eye on the figures? Let's start with tenancy abuse of PRH flats. I have been approached with cases showing that there is now less discretion in dealing with cases. I welcome the Secretary's remark about being flexible. Yes, so let's strike a balance in dealing with tenancy abuse. Now I turn to well-off tenants. Say you have a family with two children on an income of twenty-five thousand dollars. And such a family will now have to pay two point five times the PRS, PR E rent. So in such cases, people will have to move out if they have to rent a private flat. Can these people really afford a flat of their own? PRH flats contributes to social cohesion, after all. So let's bear in mind the impact on, of these policies on different tenants. Do we have the figures? So two questions, one, well-off, well-being design, and second, empathy in tenancy, combating tenancy abuse. Now, the initiative about well-being design is about being thoughtful. We focus on older housing estates. Estates that are forty years or older are in greater need of maintenance. Since they will need major repairs anyway, we get designers involved for those projects. For certain housing estate, we got an engine, a nonprofit involved. They designed patterns for a footpath populated with local residents. We coordinate the effort so that we achieve results that are greater than the sum of the parts put together. Now, on combating tenancy abuse, where we are both principled and empathetic in our approach. The Appeal Panels have amended or canceled some notices to quit. The ratio is broadly similar to before. The Appeal Panel has struck a balance between principles and compassion. Now, on the enhancement, the Permanent Secretary has already discussed those points. Now I turn to well-off tenants. It's a positive, it's a positive sign that people see their income rise when they live in PRH flats. So we have three levels in terms of the rent. When people have the means, they should be planning the future and for a better future. People used to have fewer options when it comes to SSFs. But in the future, when you factor in the housing society's flat, there will be more than fifty thousand SSFs on offer. The median used to be two-point-seven million dollars. So down payment, two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars for SSFs. So that's why someone who has stayed in a transitional housing flat for three years can afford an HUS flat. So we will double down on this area. We will explain how all this works. Dr. So Chan Wing.
HB oh, six, two. This is about enforcement of tenancy control for SDUs. And this is of crucial importance to BHUs. The RVD has this to say in its reply. Over the past two years, three thousand four hundred and fifty cases were spotted. These cases involved suspected law-breaking behavior. But there were only six hundred and twenty successful prosecutions. And that's eighteen percent of all the cases spotted. Why this low prosecution rate? The fines ranged from four hundred dollars to thirty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. Would the government review the deterrent effect of such fines? Now, for the twenty-twenty-five to twenty-six estimate, for a team of fifty staff members, the staff accelerated expenditure will be forty-one point nine million dollars. But the target is simply to inspect no less than a thousand SDU households. For the previous two years, the RVD spotted three thousand and eighty cases. So on average, each year, you spot more than fifteen hundred cases. So why set a target? That's
So why set a target that's lower than the cases you spotted in each of the two previous years? So are you being ambitious enough with the target?
Right, a question on tendency control and subdivided units enforcement matters. Secretary. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Dr. So. We respect the court's ruling in these cases. The court metes out fine under the proportionality principle. I will invite Mr. Kevin Seo to take your question on the details. Mrs. Seo.
Thank you. The member is concerned about the inspection on S D U households. We take a multi-pronged and diversified approach in taking enforcement action. We identify cases through inspection as well as reaching out to S D U households. We also step up publicity. For example, we have, we have a mobile publicity van to reach out to S D U households in the community. And we've reached out to over ten thousand S D U households. As far as prosecution is concerned, the whole process involves investigation, collection of evidence, initiating prosecution. It takes time, and we go through each and every case and all the steps very seriously. In fact, we identified close to five thousand such cases in the past three years. We successfully prosecuted six hundred and thirty-four cases. We also initiated prosecution for another three hundred plus cases. And for other cases, we've issued warning letters. This is all due to our efforts in enforcement action and successful investigation. As for other cases pending prosecution, we need to have regard to the relevant legislation. For example, in some cases upon investigation, no law-breaking behavior has been identified. And for other cases, the prosecution threshold is simply not reached. So as I understand, with, among the identified cases, some fifty-five percent of cases resulted in warning letters. I have a question on O two four. That's a question that I submitted. I think that members are concerned about the cash allowance trial scheme. It was introduced in twenty twenty-one on a trial basis to run for three years. Until twenty twenty-four, it was further extended to, till the end of June this year, by one year, that means. According to local residents, they find this scheme really good because five point five, six billion dollars was spent to benefit a hundred and ten thousand recipients. So the scheme has benefited P R H applicants as well as those waiting for light public housing. Recently, we've heard from the grassroots tenants that without the subsidy under C A T S, they would be subject to hefty financial hardship. Now, according to the administration, intake for L P H has begun, and some of these recipients of the C A T S allowance have moved on to public rental housing. Now, has the government looked into whether the current market situation and that there has been a drop in the level of rent? And there is also another suggestion that because of, because of the government measures, there may be a rise in housing rent, rent, and that the tenants may be facing even more pressure. So would the government consider what should be done to help the grassroots, right? This is really popular question. So please take this question on market rental survey as well as your follow-up action. Well, I think we've answered the question as well. According to the information provided, in some districts, the level of rent has not gone up, and in some other districts, the levels have actually gone down. For subdivided units, in fact, the level of rent has not gone up, contrary to other private properties. So we're giving more choices to grassroots in the form of T H and L P H, and they may have heard from their neighbors that there are more affordable choices now. This term of government has invented, invested a lot of resources in helping them. And in fact, I forgot to mention just now that we have the Community Living Room Initiative. That's another very, another good policy. I've heard from local residents, for example, that they are, they can now use the laundromat, and it's really affordable for them to do a load of washing. And we also have, say, another initiative under the C C F, under which residents are provided with subsidies to help them move flats and buy furniture. And as I understand, there are also private funds that are going to dish out either allowances or shopping coupons for the residents moving into L P H to tide them over. So next, we have Mr. Leitong Quak and Mrs. Carmen Khan waiting to speak. I think that we should adjourn the meeting afterwards, so I'll draw a line here. Mr. Leitong Quak.
I'd like to follow up on H B O five eight. That's a question on the enforcement of the notice of tendency, Form A R two. This question has been asked by other members, but I'd like to give another take. In the past three years, three hundred five, three thousand five hundred and seventy-three cases were received by the R V D and one thousand seven hundred warning notices, warning letters were issued. So that's fifty percent of all cases. And by contrast, you only had four hundred ninety-six cases with follow-up actions. That means prosecution. That's thirteen point eight percent of the total. And on average, the court metes out a fine of roughly two thousand dollars per case. So despite all the efforts, the offenders are only given a fine of two thousand dollars. And as we all know, the current rental level of these subdivided units, I think that the penalties are on the low side. Is it because of the legal constraints that instead of initiating prosecution, you issue warning letters instead? If that is the case, will you consider amending the legislation? In light of the level of penalty meted out by the court, we consider three, you know, adopting a summary approach so that fixed penalty of five thousand or ten thousand dollars would be meted out instead without going through the court. I'll give the floor to Mrs. Seo to take this question. Thank you, Chairman. About warning letters, in the beginning, when the ordinance took effect, many owners were quite ignorant about the latest legal requirements. So having sought legal advice, we decided to take this approach, and that means for non-compliance cases, we should start with issuing warning letters. Now, it's been three years since the operation of this ordinance, and we believe that the we should initiate prosecution for each and every case of non-compliance. So to answer a member's question on prosecution, comparing to the prosecution figures in the previous years, you should find that the figure has gone up by a hundred percent. And that means in the coming years, the number of warning letters to be issued will go down subsequently, and that is because we take a very serious attitude towards the non-compliance cases. We investigate into each and every of them, and we also take suitable legal action, including prosecution. As for the level of penalty, according to the ordinance, the maximum penalty is one of one million dollars fine. So that relates to failure to submit the A R two form within the required timeframe, and for repeated offenders, two, twenty-five thousand dollars would be meted out. The court will, of course, have regard to the gravity of the offense and the circumstances of the case in deciding on a penalty. We do seek legal advice before we initiate prosecution, and we also reflect the situation to the court in deciding on the level of fine. And we will continue to take this approach in enforcement and investigation so as to deal with these cases. Right, I think this is really the member's concern, is the highlight of today's questions, and please also note the members' comments. Ms. Carmen Khan.
Thank you, Chairman, for giving me the floor to put my question. Now, I've heard throughout the meeting, the housing strategy for this term of government. And I believe that two years since this government took office, the government has been heading in the right direction. Housing after all is the top priority, is a thorny issue. We need to consider the pricing mechanism for subsidized flats and review of the P R H rental as well as adjusting the ra, the ratio from seven to three to six to four based on market circumstances so as to improve the different rungs of the housing ladder. And I very much agree with what Mr. Leitong Quak said just now. We need to consider the introduction of the B R H regulatory regime for Form A R two. We need to gauge the data kept by the government, and Mr. Vincent Chang asked a question in, and the reply number is O five nine. I think these are important data in this reply. It may not be directly kept by the Bureau, but by the R V D or perhaps the C N S D. I think the R V D should step up its effort because according to Mr. Chang's question, only fifty-two thousand, fifty-two thousand A R two forms have been submitted, and we have a hundred I mean, we have a hundred and ten thousand households. So you should deploy technology, and you should be able to identify a lot more such cases. You've received so few A R two forms. Is it necessary to amend legislation by negative vetting to facilitate your enforcement? So as to tie with the introduction of the B H U regulatory regime, I think that the grace period is not the ideal approach because we have enacted legislation. Of course, everyone should abide by the law. If you allow a voluntary approach, then you may not receive a lot of A R two forms. So it's really a predicament for the R, R V D. Right, still a question on A R two. Who will take this question, please, Secretary? I'll give the floor to Mr. Seo.
The member's concern is noted. We have done our level best in enforcement as well as publicity. And meanwhile, I appreciate that more should be done to enhance the community's understanding of the law and our enforcement approach. We'll take a multi-pronged approach to identified breaches. And we will follow up on each and every case in a serious manner. We'll also step up publicity in public education. A new round of publicity will be launched. We will appeal to all owners to comply with the legal requirements. But I don't think the figures show the efforts made by the government as mentioned by Mr. Seo. So my other point is that if you need legislative amendments, please do it as quickly as possible. Right, I think that the time is up, and all questions have been asked. My members who have indicated that we should speak. I thank the officials for attending today's meeting. The next session will take place at two P M in the afternoon. So for this session, we have come to an end. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.